Welcome on everyone to the regular meeting Moose Lake City Council for Wednesday, October ninth, 2019. I'd like to start with pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the agenda. Do we have any additions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion to accept the agenda? So noted. Does that second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Down to the consent agenda. Two A minutes for September eleventh, 2019, city council regular meeting minutes. Any discussion or questions on the minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried to two B of the consent agenda, financial reports. Number one is the city council payable for October 2019. Number two is the city financial statements for September 2019. And number three is the liquor store profit and loss statement for September 2019. Do we have any questions or discussion on the financial reports?
I have one for Phil. Yes. Four hundred ninety-five dollars for product bins.
What check over?
The Moose Lake Auto Parts.
Four five, four five eight five.
That's for the entire bill, it's just the first line.
Oh, okay, I was just wondering if you could go and play.
Oh, yeah, no.
Large quantities.
I got a question on four five eight five five, Nordstrom sanitation, police department garbage, one thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars, twenty cents.
Same thing. It was, it's the entire city.
Entire city?
Yeah. And just the first line of whatever's on the check, it's on that report.
So noted, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Do I have a motion to accept the financial reports? Does that second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Down to number three, public comment. This time is reserved for comments from the public on matters not listed on the agenda. Please keep comments to three minutes. We have none, so moving on to number four. Departmental reports. Four A is the police chief. Department reports, September 2019.
Evening mayor, council. You'll find in your packets there the reports for September. We had one hundred thirty-three calls. Summer's going away and it's slowed down a little bit, but still plenty to do. Addition to the calls for service, we had five hours at the MSOP, three and a half hours for ECRC at the Department of Corrections, and then we also had an hour for other calls that were involving the DOC. The Oktoberfest was held down at the arena. We had no calls for service down there, everything seemed like it went real well down there. And another thing you'll see there, we're looking at a couple different programs that have been brought to us at the police department that are participating in. One of them is with the Department of Public Health in Carroll County. It's for people that are in crisis, situation of some sort or another where they're reaching out to the crisis team out of Birch Street. And they have, the Department of Health is providing our police department an iPad that has self-service to it. And their intentions behind that are when people are in this crisis situation and in need of Birch Street, they can use the iPad as a form of video conference that we can have in front of this person that's in crisis so that they can start the process instead of them having to just sit there and wait for them to come out there, the mobile unit to actually get to them, because that can take an hour or so. Sometimes a lot of the things can be figured out ahead of time where they can just come up with a solution or resolution or whatever, and they can set up an appointment for following date or whatever. So we're going to be trying that out with them, seeing how that works. And the other one is, it's another program that's going to be done with our local human services here and also along with our school. We met with the principal up there at the school and presented this to her and they were all on board. What it is, is this one focuses on suicide prevention in our kids. Basically, it's a program that's called Handle With Care. And basically, when there's a kid that's involved in a traumatic situation or is a police presence of some sort of really traumatic, who may be, there's a confidential email that myself, Kathy, one person that have a backup at Human Services and then the principal and one backup for her will have this email address. And any information from us, it won't be anything that has anything to do with a call that took place or anything like that. All it says is that this individual attends our schools, was present for a bad situation. Handle with care, that's all it says. They're not allowed to ask anything further beyond that as far as with the school, asking the kids or teachers, you know, talking to the kids or anything like that. It's meant to just know that if maybe their behaviors are changing and they're starting to fall asleep in class all of a sudden or something, you know, it might be because they got something going on at home, they got a traumatic event, whatnot, just to kind of watch out for them, you know, catch it ahead of time. Hopefully, it's what they're hoping with that one, so. Other than that, so moving on.
Questions? Thanks very much.
Appreciate it.
Good job, thanks. Moving on to public work superintendent report. Might give you a minute to go.
Evening mayor, members of the council. Busy fall, quick fall, you know, everyone's talking about snow already here at the end of the week, so no one wants to hear that. But getting some projects done here last minute, a few things taken off the list, so things are, things are going well, busy, but well. Water department distributed three point five million gallons drinking water in the month of September. Fire attendants have been flushed and winterized for the year. It was all taken care of, we didn't break anything, that's good. Sewer department collected thirteen point three million gallons of wastewater, finished our September discharge. Yeah, finished that of about thirty-nine million gallons. We're starting our October discharge here next week, approximately forty million gallons. Foster stream it this weekend, next week to, to, to follow it to start before we go ahead with our discharge. Lift stations have all been cleaned, they're ready for winter. The manhole on Sixth Street that was approved at the last meeting is installed and completed. The blacktop hatch hasn't done, is not done yet, will be done next week. Street department, whole filling is continuous basis. Blacktop batches, we got one getting done right now in front of City Hall on Fourth Street. And like I said, we've got four more left to do here yet this fall, we have them next week. Street department as well, we're doing some right-of-way clearing, so people are seeing some brush piles brush all over the place and we're chipping them all of them off, cutting them down, cleaning things up, making more room for dump trucks to get through downtown and we're filing and that kind of thing, so. And then cemeteries, fall cleanup, we'll, we'll really start next week, because a lot of leaves and a lot of, you know, that gets crazy. And the cemeteries are winterized for the winter as well. And then one extra, next Tuesday, Tim, I haven't told you, but here you go, I'll be in, I will be in St. Cloud at the memoir meeting that I actually sent the board for down there, so.
Good question, Phil. Do you know, is the cap ground fully winterized too, a lot of lines?
We shut the water off yesterday and I believe the crews are working on getting that winterized for the winter right now, so we're, we're right in the, in the ballgame there.
With all the rain that we had, did we have any, I know that we had some, probably had to get rid of some water. What, what have we done or have we had any major problems with the waterfall?
So, do you want to talk about that now or later? We can talk about it now. To start with, Tim, we did not have to get rid of any water. We were able to contain all of it somehow and it's just built up our ponds up much faster. So we did not have a spill, we didn't have a release, we did not have an incident with MPCA, but we sat on thin ice for about eight hours last Monday.
If you go to page sixty-six, it's new business six C. There's some readings from the main lift station, well, it's actually from all of our lift stations, but the main lift station is the one that we're kind of pointing out. So on page sixty-six, if that number that's highlighted is in thousands, so it actually makes it a million, it's two million four hundred and forty-three thousand seven hundred gallons of wastewater was, was pumped on the day that we got five and a half inches of rain. The day, or no, this was a couple days prior to that, was about three hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So just when we got that rain, it was about six and a half times as much water got pumped up to the lift station and I think when we talked about yesterday, today, we were still at a million or something like that.
Just under a million.
Just under a million. So it's taking quite a while, all that water that's in the ground is still leaking into the sewer system and flowing down there. So it takes even quite a while to get back down to, to normal amounts or dry amounts. But yeah, you can just kind of tell the difference just from eye to eye.
So our plant, our facility is, it was constructed at a four hundred ninety-five million, four hundred ninety-five thousand gallon a day demand. So that is what our facility is built to. We average at three seventy-seven, number is really close, we're right around three seventy-five for the most part for an average. Yeah, that was, all the pond levels came up dramatically and now all the primaries are filling extremely fast. So we will be looking at another discharge yet. We have one going to happen October, November, and we will be ending up having to do one in December, just to try to have enough storage through winter. So it's, it's definitely something that we really need to think about with our eye to eye issue. I know we've set money aside in the 2020 budget and that's a very smart thing to do because this is group and quoting that we a lot worked on.
Do we have any idea how much came from the district?
So the next column down, if you look on the first page, which you said is what, sixty-six, Tim?
Yep.
So the next column down, it doesn't exactly tell you which or who or what station it is, but where it says yesterday, two hundred and seventy point nine.
That's two one? The meter pit.
Yep. I'm sorry, it does say meter pit, yes, that, I'm sorry, that is the flow meter on Kenwood. So, so that day in particular, we took in two hundred and seventy thousand gallons of wastewater from that. Now, on the next page you look, we got eighty-eight thousand. I cannot remember what the daily maximum is, off the top of my head, it's written down in the office, but regardless, whatever it is, they are fairly close to sixty to seventy thousand per day. The weekends, the holidays, definitely in summer, they're through the roof. I mean, every, all the gallons are full, everyone's out there, but for the most part, even looking at them, what was, did you do the math on theirs, what, how many times more was there?
There's a three, three or four.
And they're, definitely their system is quite a bit newer than ours, but just kind of a, a big tool to look at and realize, you know, we have a, we do have a problem.
And I, I don't think that the goal is ever, I mean, the goal would be to get to zero, but it's, it's impossible to get to zero, but I think the key is, is that, you know, when we did the lift station project and we fixed the, the section of pipe that was in the ditch, we saw a huge decrease. So every single thing that we do, it impacts the pump hours and the wear on our lift station. I mean, when it was raining, we had all three pumps running all morning long, just constant at the same time. Normally, they cycle one, two, then three, then one, then two, then three. So, you know, there's, there's just an extra wear on there, there's the fact that our pond capacity is extremely high, we're right around ninety percent for pond capacity, so any development that, that comes, eventually we will get to the point where the MPCA won't let us do any future expansion, whether commercially or residential. So any fixes that we make lower all of those numbers and it kind of builds on itself. So it helps us not just with our lift stations, it helps us with flooding, it helps us with development and all of those. So each of these projects is, is very, very, very important.
Thank you very much. Moving on to number C, technology library report.
I don't have anything for technology, do you have anything for the library?
No, well, just some discussion on fall book sale. Any questions by the council? Engineer report?
The first item was, that we discussed was actually the sewer lining. In our sewer budget, we have a hundred thousand dollars allocated for sewer lining for that main sewer line. The budget, or the estimate that our engineers originally put together was a little over four hundred thousand, so they're going to be working on sometime after the budget is approved, in that January timeframe, going out with an RFP for approximately a hundred thousand dollars worth of work to try to break that project up into a couple of years. So they will, they will start working on that. They are putting together some cost estimates for the trail from the bridge to the school. There was a couple of problem areas that we identified with the trail, so we needed a better idea of the cost for, for the trail after we walked it, so we knew kind of how to handle some of the trouble areas. And then finally, Phil and our engineers have been working on a mercury minimization plan for the MPCA, which is done, we'll just say we got it done, which is good.
Questions by the council? Before each chamber of commerce updates.
Well, most of the events that we've had during the summer course are all done with now and we'll be looking forward to trunk or treat, that's really, I don't think that's really a chamber event, but it's, it's a community event. It'll be on the, I believe, on the third and first, early around four p.m. People are welcome to come down to the park with your candy for trick-or-treaters and families with young children, or welcome to come in costume and, and get out some candy and have a little fun. And hopefully our next big event would be the saddle visit on December seventh at the park. And we've got our chamber meeting tomorrow at the squirrel cave to the river at noon. Everybody's invited. Anything else that, any questions you have for me?
I'll make the Oktoberfest or whatever I call it, my girl.
Yeah, yeah, that was, music was loud, but that's to be expected. Yeah, it was great to, yeah, I just stopped down there, got some pictures and, and it was nice to see what was going on and it was, I was glad to hear everything went well and that means it'll continue.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Hearing on to number five, previously discussed business. Five A, electric pilot negotiation, previously discussed as franchise fee.
On page thirty-eight, there's an email from Kurt Yort to me, letting me know that the, the fee that we were discussing as a franchise fee was actually put in place as a payment in lieu of taxes or a pilot. It talks a little bit about when and how that, that fee was implemented and increased. I, I thanked Kurt for, for his email and then in kind of the bottom of the first paragraph, he stated that it is negotiated between the commission and the city, so I, we wanted that we would like to renegotiate. So probably the biggest thing that I need to know from the council is, on page thirty-nine, forty and forty-one is what I presented last time. I think that we probably want to put together a, an idea at least of what, what we would like to try and renegotiate that fee to, so long as they're, they're willing to meet and renegotiate that, that fee. Does anybody have any questions on any of the material that I presented last month? How the fee works?
Would you want to do the same, just to change your name? Designated for the same purpose?
Yes, we would, we would still, how we handle the accounting for it, we could decide to do on our own. The fee needs to be agreed by, by both parties though, so I just need to know, I mean, my suggestion is, I think on here I have three, three rate changes would be the middle one, that point zero zero six, which equates to just under fifty thousand dollars per year. That's, that's the one that I would suggest, but I want to make sure that we're all on the same page before we, before we do that.
Discussion by the council? You looking for a motion, I guess? So you can negotiate?
I would say that a motion to renegotiate the, the pilot would be, would be appropriate and then maybe just consensus on what, on what we're looking for to try to renegotiate that fee to.
Council?
I made the motion that we renegotiate or give Tim the authority or city administrator to renegotiate the pilot.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have consensus on point zero zero six?
I find that Moose Lake fee only sixty-four cents a month for residential on our effort is that correct or?
Nope. So the fee on page forty and forty-one gives you an idea of what it would be as a change per customer. The three dollars and, the three dollars and sixty-four cents is the total, so they, they used to pay two seventy, now they would pay three dollars and sixty-four cents, so it's actually a little less than a dollar per month of a change for residential customers.
Do we change that to also a franchise fee?
I don't think that we could change it so that it's also a franchise fee. I think that we could.
Or not also, instead of the pilot, whatever name?
Instead of the pilot?
Right.
I think the benefits, in his email here, Kurt said that the attorney that he spoke to was that a pilot is a little bit easier on how to renegotiate or how to handle the fee. There's some state statutes that govern franchise fees, not that we really care. We're looking to use the funds exactly how, how they're intended per state statute anyways, so it's not a big deal to us. I would say it would probably be more work to try to change it than it's worth, other than if they don't want to renegotiate, then I would say that we would just implement a franchise fee for just the increase portion. We wouldn't do it for the, the whole pilot and the franchise fee, we would just put in a franchise fee for the increase.
I was just looking at it, so that all of the franchises under the sort of the same parameters, they're all franchise fees, goes to the city so that people can see it, understand that it's not another tax or whatever, you want to be that this particular company has to pay for it to be able to do business and so on.
Yeah, I, I think that a payment in lieu of taxes has, has a number of benefits. I, I've talked to Mercy Hospital about trying to put in a, a payment in lieu of taxes. I, I think really a, a payment in lieu of taxes is the understanding and the cooperation of a nonprofit entity or a non-tax entity in, in understanding that they, they should pay towards basically what, what amounts to be payments in lieu of taxes or property taxes. So a pilot is, is a, is a very successful program in many communities and, I mean, I'm glad that, that that's what it is. It certainly makes it easier to, to kind of handle and renegotiate.
Do you think we have consensus, Mayor? Yes?
Yes.
So consensus, Tim? Thank you. Moving on to five B, county prosecution services contract. Sit down, page forty-two.
This is what we've been talking about the last couple of months. The county attorney provided us a new contract with the total sum being sixteen thousand dollars annually, paid quarterly. Do you have any questions?
You looking for a motion?
Yeah, we would, we would need a motion to.
So before discussion, questions and our motion?
I made a motion to agree to enter into the agreement with the Carroll County Attorney's Office that's submitted.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five C, tobacco twenty-one ordinance example letter to license holders. That's on page forty-six.
Yeah, I, I have a meeting with the, the group that has been reviewing this on, I think it was, yeah, next week on Wednesday. So the point of our next meeting is to bring back ideas based off of the ordinance that they have proposed here. So just to kind of go over some of the things that I talked about last time, to, to kind of highlight the, maybe the hot button issues, at least in my, my reviewing of it. Flavored tobacco, operating within a certain distance of youth-related locations, whether it's parks, schools, what have you. The age of clerks that work in establishments, the fine dollar amount that they have listed here is higher than, than what we charge for the same thing already. And then not allowing businesses to offer coupons for tobacco products. So those are, those are probably the five largest things in my mind that we should maybe offer suggestions back on how we'd like to handle it. What I want?
What you're going to be there for?
No, 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 this would be, those are the five things that I would say are, are probably the most contentious if we were to, to start talking with tobacco retailers now. They might not be to you all, so I need you guys to tell me if you want me to have them take those out, change them, address them in a different way, what, what all you would like.
What's the first one?
Flavored tobacco.
Flavored tobacco.
So this ordinance states that flavored tobacco is designed to, mostly to get youth to start using tobacco. I would say that from, from what we've seen in Duluth who banned flavored tobacco, that's maybe not the most popular thing to do.
This is to ban flavored tobacco entirely or just for kids twenty-one?
Nope, so this would ban flavored tobacco unless you are just a tobacco retailer. So like holiday gas station would not be allowed to sell flavored tobacco, they could sell flavorless tobacco, but if you wanted to sell flavored tobacco, you would need to open up what amounts to be like a tobacco shop.
Council?
I agree with Council of Labor when you stated that I would like to see the state just take care of this and not getting us involved because now you're going to have the city of Barnum and other cities that are not going to be doing this and they're going to be having everybody go over there.
They would, so-
If we do it county-wide.
So let me back up. Okay, so the only entities that are involved are the city of Moose Lake, the city of Cloquet, and Carlton County. Barnum, Cromwell, Carlton, most of those places, Scanlon, are all, all of their tobacco licenses are held with Carlton County. So Carlton County's ordinance would cover any of those areas. The point of this ordinance and the point of these meetings is to try to make it so that we all pass the same thing. So it's not to try to pit one against the other. I think that what we should try to work towards is implementing something that doesn't maybe make retailers want to leave Carlton County, but at the same time starts to address some of the concerns.
I agree that's a good idea, I'm just saying that if, well, my town's not doing it. Who isn't doing it? I mean, it wasn't so long ago, maybe it was. But not for me, that people just go to Wisconsin and buy their alcohol when the kids were eighteen years old.
Or on Sundays.
On Sunday, yeah, and people just don't see it. It's having, the desired effect is what people want. I'd love to see it on the statewide, but it's just handled in the state.
That is certainly something that you all can decide and I can bring back to that meeting as well.
Do each of these communities, each of these towns have different laws and?
Only Cloquet, Moose Lake, and Carlton County are the only licensed tobacco. We're the only organizations that have tobacco licensing. So like Barnums are handled by Carlton County.
With the county, are they or are they not?
They will be passing something.
So weren't you the one that had with answers on these items?
On the ordinance as a whole.
On the fourth favor of the ordinance?
I have no problem with this saying that it has to be the same for everybody. And I think that we're paying people against each other, I'm offering nobody's money. But it's against-
I'm in favor of fourteen, I'm in favor of the county, you mean county-wide? Is that what you're looking for?
They can't pass something on to us. We are our own licensing entity.
On the favor, I guess, of following what the county passes. That way at least we're in line with the county. After there's a pass, we can maybe more strict.
Right.
If we so choose.
We can make it more or less, or anything now.
But it sends the need to follow what the county quotes the pass, and then if it doesn't work for us, either make it stricter. I'm guessing we'll stricter than anything. We want to stay in line with what the county is passing.
Which they are trying to involve all of us so that so that when they do pass it, we all just pass the same thing so that we're, nobody's more or less strict than anybody else is kind of the goal.
So your goal is to go through one, two, five then, and see if that's over?
Unless you don't want to do it entirely, then I would say we probably don't need to waste everyone's time. If we are even semi-interested, somewhat interested in passing this, I think that we should go back with suggestions on how to make this ordinance better before we just say we don't want to do it at all. If there's any interest in passing this. Sure, flavored tobacco, banning flavored tobacco from Moose Lake. Unless you're a tobacco shop.
So the tobacco shop here, right next to us on the street, where they would be exempt? Then they would be able to sell?
Yeah, it basically gives you, it gives you a whole list of requirements that you would need to meet, but if you were a tobacco shop, yes, you can sell tobacco. But that has to basically be your primary business.
Is this business up here considered by that tobacco shop? Maybe she sells other things too.
Or are you talking about, oh, no, absolutely not. She would not be able to.
I guess I would concede now, if we're going to say why would we have one business only who can sell tobacco that's geared towards children? Our eighteen-year-olds are going to flock to that store and buy there for something good from there?
We will still, no matter if you're tobacco shop or not, if we pass this, we would still ban all sales to anyone less than twenty-one. So this would be, just for these topics, are we okay with the sale of flavored tobacco to twenty-one and up?
By a tobacco shop?
By a tobacco shop only, or can a gas station sell flavored tobacco to people that are twenty-one and older?
But then, if you're twenty-one, that's-
If you're under twenty-one, he can't sell it.
That's a different topic, we'll get to that one.
Let's back this up again. This is ridiculous.
Okay.
I understand what they want from us, but I'm more in favor saying we wait till, see what they pass. Let them pass their ordinance for the whole county. And if we feel we need to make it stricter or less, then it's our choice, I'd say wait for that.
What the administrator's saying is that if we bring something to the table, we'll be able to-
Influence-
Influence or have a say in what is brought forth?
Right. What do you want this by?
Next Wednesday I need to bring just our thoughts back. Let me just ask this. Do we want to ban tobacco sales to anyone under twenty-one?
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, okay, let's start with the easier. How always start with the- Quite honestly, that's what I'm saying.
I know.
I'm saying that the rest of these just start to impact-
Just twenty-one and that's it? Consensus?
Yeah, I'll back that, just agree with you. Everywhere and everything in that is ways twenty-one.
There you go, after twenty-one, if you decide to buy flavored bubble gum, whatever, it's going to be minimal. You can stand out there and pull bubble smokes out of it.
Okay, so we're good, we are for banning the sale to under twenty-one, but that's where we want to be. Okay, good, that's all I needed.
Is that what you're trying to get to at the beginning of this?
I didn't want to try to influence you with maybe my thoughts on this, but yeah, that's kind of where I was trying to go.
All right. Any other questions by the council? Thank you very much. Good luck with your meeting, let us know how it goes. Back to five, D city of Moose Lake lodging tax, first reading.
Well, let me just start with this, are we in favor of a lodging tax? Before I start going through stuff? I, I'll start with my opinion. I think that we should be in favor of a lodging tax. I think that most other communities our size and larger have a lodging tax. A lodging tax is not a tax imposed on people that live here. A lodging tax is specifically designed to put money back into events where people stay in the hotels where the tax is imposed. I think that this is a benefit, I think it helps out the chamber, I think that this is a very, very, very good idea. You're also talking about like three dollars on a hundred-dollar room. We're not talking about some crazy tax here. If you go to Duluth, it's way higher than that. If you go to Minneapolis, it's considerably higher than that. This is, I know that it says tax, but this is not, not really bad.
How many places exactly is it affecting? I know there's the hotel up there, the freeway obviously.
And then the two campgrounds.
And the two campgrounds.
Red Fox is included?
But if you stay for thirty days or longer, that does not count. So I don't know what percentage, I'm assuming that it's similar to ours where most of the people that are up there are seasonal, in which case the tax does not apply to them. It's more like a tender, say you come for the weekend, then there would be a three percent tax imposed on that.
I know the chamber has talked to the business. Used to be Days Inn, now it's Moose Lodge?
Yeah, it's called.
And they are not against it, they didn't have any concerns about it. So the people that own that aren't concerned?
Correct.
Has somebody spoken to Red Fox? I can't remember if that was part of the discussion, do you remember, Lois?
No one had contacted them yet at the last meeting, last chamber reading. Maybe we'll hear more tomorrow.
I know the first time around, a couple of years ago, they did not respond to the request. It was only the two hotels that responded. Red Fox didn't at that time. I wonder if they're aware that they don't live in the community here, or if they live down closer to the cities. I'm wondering if Red Fox is aware of that or considering this.
I don't know the answer to that question.
I'm in favor.
Okay, so then let me just go through a couple of things. This is a three percent lodging tax. Ninety-five percent of it would go to the chamber. We would collect the funds, we would submit ninety-five percent of it to the chamber. We would keep five percent of it as an administrative fee. The funds that come from the lodging tax, like I said, need to be reinvested into events or advertising, marketing, things like that that bring people to the community to basically to stay in our hotels and spend money on our sales tax. It goes through penalties, it goes through how we would handle like monthly reports. It's all pretty simple, those are the main things.
In reality, this money should be spent to help these hotels.
Correct.
Too, so there is a benefit to them for this.
They will sit on the board, I believe, was the discussion, that they will be a part of this discussion.
TIAA had said that they thought what they would like to do is create a committee to handle those funds of which would be made up of the two campgrounds and the hotel and the chamber.
Are you looking for any action at this one, this just first reading?
If you want to, you would make a motion to basically just hold the first reading of this ordinance. And then we will publish it, we'll put an ordinance number to it, and we'll bring it back for a second reading in a public hearing next meeting.
To the council, a motion?
I'll make a motion for the first reading of the ordinance imposing a lodging tax or fee or whatever you want to call it.
Second, any further discussion, questions? By doing this, this isn't voting on passing this?
Nope, you could still not pass it at the next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I'd just like to have somebody contact Red Fox and see what their opinion is on this.
To be clear, all you're doing is you're voting to basically have us put it in the paper and call for a public hearing at the next meeting.
Okay.
That's what you're voting for.
Okay. I'm in favor of that. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Both? Motion carried. Moving on to new business. Six A, the twenty-twenty budget. A, we have the county at two point nine percent being the fire district, city, school district decrease.
This is just an opportunity for anybody to bring up anything that they'd like to add or change to our budget. And also to let you know, it was in the paper, the Carlton County is proposing a three point nine percent increase. The fire district, I don't know what they're proposing.
They were talking about keeping it the same.
Okay.
As two thousand and nineteen. They had a few things they wanted to shuffle around, but they wanted to keep the figures pretty much the same.
Okay, and then the school district is going to decrease their budget. So just, those three are just an FYI. If you'd like to tell me anything for our budget, now would be the time. Okay.
Good, thank you. Moving on to six B park board project list and update. This is a list from this last August. I walked through parks and this was turned in for the twenty-twenty budget, but Tim jumped on it right away and I think everything is completed except for-
No, we're all done.
All done. Will has been reset.
I did, I did all of these things. Oh, no!
It's not on here.
Oh, I forgot, I didn't get that on there.
No, we didn't put it on there anymore.
No, so this is, I will say, the reason that I wanted to put this in here is for two reasons. First is, last year when the park board did this, or did you do one last year?
I did.
Okay, last year was, basically last year was the huge year. It hadn't been done for a number of years. The park board came back with a really, really long list and Phil got all of those things done. The point is, is that the second year when they came back, this is a very, very short list, which is kind of the goal by doing this is if we keep up on these things, hopefully we can have a much shorter list. The second reason that I wanted to bring this up, and there's a couple of pictures below, some picnic tables that got printed, and then, what do we call them?
What was your enclosure of?
I do want to point out that both years, this list in its entirety has been given to Phil and his crew, and they have gotten all of it done, not only early, but without really any help from me except for wanting to check things off. So I think that they deserve some kudos. This is a bunch of stuff that they got done that makes the community look better. So I wanted to thank Phil and his crew.
Thank you.
I got a question here about the swimming area docks. It says need repairs, discussion about not putting back a bench, is that what it says? Or what's that all about?
Phil needed in front, I think, about D number two?
Yeah, D two.
Oh, that was a discussion, the docks needed some welding. But their aluminum, they needed a special welder to do it, to come down and actually do the welding. And then there was a discussion, do we even want to put them out if there are no lifeguards? And the discussion went that it's more of a danger to have them out if we don't have lifeguards. So if we do, and you know, I think we, as you know, we advertised month after month after month this last spring, probably starting in April, about two or three months, we could not get any lifeguards to apply or anyone to apply for a lifeguard. Our discussion went by the park board that if we do not have lifeguards, we'd rather not have the docks out because there's a danger of having them there without any supervision. And one of the things that happened without the lifeguards, old study to pull up next to them. People were running on them and jumping off. And you know, that isn't that deep there, that I can lock it. It's just more of a danger. So the park board decided they did not want them out, including the lifeguards. But we still should get them repaired. So on whether putting them out is based on, is based on whether or not we can get lifeguards. lifeguards for the next coming season or we're going to apply for them, put them nicely on, but if we don't get them.
Okay, well, I understand your concern about somebody getting hurt, but I'm also worried about the park losing certain things. You know, I, I'd hate to see the beach lose anything more. I mean, they've already lost their raft, which I find disappointing. I'd hate to see them lose their, their docks. I think, I think the park is a very valuable part of this town and I'd like to see it have as much of it it can, but it's just all the more important getting these lifeguards down there. I understand that, that that's the problem.
If we get them, there'd be no problem. I'd like to get these, these docks repaired at some point.
Yeah, I'd like to see them repaired, obviously, too.
But it will take somebody, evidently with different skills to do aluminum.
Yeah, but there's a local workshop that would put it back in the ground. We just assembled it all there. We cannot do it, but I mean, this is some old house.
To me, we should get them repaired and, and if you can't get, at some point though, if you can't get lifeguards, what's the point of keeping them too? You know, they'll just deteriorate just sitting there and come out.
We can, we can talk about the docks tomorrow, just maybe get a quote and see, see what we'll take.
We didn't assign somebody to go after lifeguards. That was far in college and not only at the school here, but calling around to the different schools that have pools and make sure they knew that we're looking for lifeguards. YMCA in Duluth, I keep, keep contacting numerous places and could not get enough.
Yeah, they, they need to have some kind of qualifications still, right?
They have to be fully certified.
Yeah. So that, that makes it more difficult.
Any other questions? Thanks, Phil and your crew also for the job on, on completing the list last year and this year because it did make a difference in the parks and, and you know, it's what you said, we want to keep these parks up and looking nice and in sync for the community. They're a great asset. We want to keep them that way. Moving on to six C, Main Lift Station I and I, and I think we've covered that. Any more?
Nope.
That's good. Six D, the Midora Corporation Repair at Sewer Ponds Quote.
Uh, this is to repair, basically a cord that, an electrical line that was broken that is for the mixers, correct?
And computer board.
And the computer board.
Yes.
Basically, we need to approve this quote, but we're also hoping that we can get it done for considerably cheaper than this. This is the most expensive that it will be. We're hoping that we can basically splice some layer together and just shorten up the line a little bit and have this come in considerably cheaper. But if we are not able to do that, this is as expensive as it will, will be. If you have questions about this, prob, I would probably ask Phil. This one's a little, this one might be a little on my, my own. As Phil likes to say, I don't go to the ponds all that often.
Well, we understand it lower hit this.
Yeah, we got hit by a lot more. It did. Yep.
Just like, like, you know, it's buried.
Yeah, it's buried, just a little bit, but the, the tail, it comes out of the control box. This one got caught while he was pouring on the box. If anyone's seen the slopes on the banks over there.
Yep, yep.
It's not fun.
You're looking for a motion?
Yeah.
Discussion motion by the council, someone? You have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The votes? Motion carried. Six E. Highway 73, this is the trail to the school. The trail walk through, you have discussed anymore? And it did some of it.
No, other than, you know, I think that there's, there's a couple of sections that are going to need a little bit of extra attention other than just paving a trail down some flat areas. We've got some wetlands to deal with, some, some steeper slopes and maybe a business, so. But the mayor and myself and Phil and our engineers and some car that honked multiple times at us, all went for a walk through on the trail and came up with at least most, mostly a plan to get it done.
Question by council. If you want a tour, Tim will give you a tour of the dome. Saturday would be good for you, wouldn't it?
Yeah, three in the morning, be there.
Yeah. Very good. Number seven, reports and correspondence, nothing good. Number eight, committee and board meeting minutes. A, we have Moose Lake Power regular meeting minutes, August 13. B, Moose Lake Area Fire District Board meeting minutes for August 13. Number C, Moose Lake Park Intergration Meeting Minutes for September 8th, excuse me. D is Moose Lake Area Fire District Board Meeting Minutes for September 10. Any questions or discussion on the minutes? On which minutes? I know when I asked you to write it down and have it there, I can't think of anything other than the season's over and finishing up everything. And Joe's already in, at X and K, sent a picture in New Mexico, it's 84 degrees and he's sitting next to a pool. Can't think of anything else.
I, I can't remember.
Ice is in at the arena. They painted it this last weekend and it's going to be ready for practice at the next week.
Yep.
I can't either. Going on to number nine, announcements, regular Moose Lake City Council meeting Wednesday, November 13, 4 p.m. right here. Moose Lake Economic Development Authority Wednesday, November 13 at 12 p.m., the city council room conference room, excuse me. Moose Lake Water and Light Commission regular meeting Tuesday, October 15. Now, did that change? You changed that number essentially, yes?
22nd, 22nd.
Yes, that's what I think I wanted you to write down. Okay. Moose Lake Water and Light Commission regular meeting Tuesday, October 22nd, 3 p.m. at the Water and Light Office. Moose Lake Housing Area Development Authority Board, October 14, 11 a.m., Hillside Main Commander Office. Moose Lake Area Fire District Tuesday, November 12, 6:30 p.m., Emergency Response Center. Moose Lake Park Board meeting Monday, November 4th, 6:30 p.m. at the city council chamber right here. Library Board meeting, or meeting, November 11th at 1 p.m. at the city conference room. That's, we have a motion to adjourn. So, have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both adjourned.